People are trying to have students tell they.
I'd like to call the meeting.
Oh, things people say.
Yes. We have two incumbent members, Diane Lyons and Mark Flyshower. We were re-elected at the annual meeting on May 19, 2015. And I would ask Ms. Lyons to please stand and take the oath. Sign with the door. I, Diane Lyons, solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge duties of trustee according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I, Mark Flyshower, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
I want to welcome you, Diane and Mark, to your next three-year term. I also would like to ask for nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2015-16 school year.
I would like to nominate Mark Flyshower.
Set. Do I have any other nominations? If so, okay. All those in favor of Mark Flyshower as President of the Board? All in favor? Congratulations, Mark. Now, I'll turn the meeting over to President Mark Flyshower as Chairperson of the meeting.
Okay. May I have a nomination for the Office of Vice President? Lisa.
I nominate Deirdre. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Congratulations. Okay. Okay. May I have a nomination for the position of Executive Committee Member for the 2015-16 school year for the Dutchess County School Board Association?
I nominate you.
Okay, is there a second?
I second. You'll accept it.
I accept. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. That motion passes. Okay. I have a motion to appoint Mary Ann Bovee as Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. And may I have a motion to accept the slate of committee assignments for the Board of Education as was in your pack?
So moved. Set.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale as School District Treasurer for the 2015-16 school year with the appointment of Elizabeth Van Kuren as Deputy School District Treasurer for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Carolyn Peck as Central Treasurer for the Extra Classroom Activity Fund for the 2015-16 school year at a stipend of $2,560.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Susan McCormack as School Tax Collector for the 2015-16 school year at no additional stipend.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Pardon me, why? May I have a motion to appoint Steve Bangert as Claims Auditor at $27.50 per hour for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Thomas Brunel, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent, and Joseph Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, as Deputy Purchasing Agent for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Marvin Krebs as Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale, District Treasurer, as the additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2015-16 school year with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion?
Yes. Are the hourly rates for the services posted or do you know what they are?
Marvin Krebs gets a stipend as per the Rhinebeck Administrative Association contract. Christine Natale, if her services are needed, is at her hourly rate.
But when is that rate? That's my question.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can figure out that both, you know, what the stipend is and then what Christine's hourly rate is. I think it's only been a nice one, seven, four or five years.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Richard Zip, Director of Special Education, as Section 504 ADA Coordinator for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as Designated Educational Official for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as Age Coordinator for the 2015-16 school year at no extra stipend.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to designate Richard Zip, Director of Special Education, to attend last-chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDEA with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district following consultation with the Superintendent of Schools where practicable and notification to the Board President or Vice President in his or her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion?
I just have a question that by now I should know, but Joe, does that imply then that if we haven't, or the Board President had not received any, if there was no settlement, if, like, the Board President has not received any notification, then there were no issues to settle that went to this level?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, we, I can't remember when we-
Right. That's why I was suddenly asking. I don't recall it.
No.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. And I'll just call your attention to the items 13, 15, and 16. We're going to be voting in consent format. So is there anyone who would like to remove anything from item 13? Okay. May I have a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to direct the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services to make payments of (a) monies for investments, (b) interest on bonds as it becomes due, (c) payments to redeem bonds as they become due, (d) checks to cover payrolls and agency deposit accounts, (e) utility bills, (f) expense payments to employees, and (g) payments under contractual agreements.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from item 15? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the items in item number 15.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion, is there anyone who would like to remove any item from number 16? Okay. May I have a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to readopt all previous Board policies and the Code of Ethics.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve that the meetings of the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District be held on the dates indicated on the schedule submitted at 7:30 p.m. in the high school/middle school library for the 2015-16 school year on alternate locations and/or times as noted on the agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. And there was a change to that?
Yes, that's what I wanted to say. I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, I think I sent you an email on this, but if you look at the item, that was at your place this evening, March 29, 2016. That's the fifth Tuesday of the month. The fourth Tuesday is the Tuesday of spring break. Unless you prefer to meet during spring break week, I took the liberty of moving it to the fifth. There are still two weeks before the following Board meeting in April, at which time we'll be conducting a public hearing on budget adoption. I just want to let you know that that's a, that's a change from our normal cadence of here you go. Just for your information.
All right. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to adopt the per-mile reimbursement rate set by the Internal Revenue Service, which is currently 57.5 cents for approved use of personal vehicles on school business, subject to change of the Internal Revenue reimbursement rates.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's unanimous. That motion passes.
I have to say, all right.
May I have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that effective July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2016, the Rhinebeck Central School District will waive the fingerprinting fee of $99.70 for all new employees who are hired to work less than 20 hours per week or receive a salary of $30,000 or less, except for per-DM substitutes. The District will reimburse per-DM substitutes for this expense after the completion of 10 days of work and the submission of proof of payment documentation. The District will pay this fee in advance for all others as outlined above.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out to the Board that we have included this additional language about per-DM substitutes. That's new to the consent agenda, you know, not to, you know, not to point fingers at any individual, but we have had, over the last number of years, any number of per-DM substitutes who have taken advantage of our district to be fingerprinted for free and then have not worked in our school district. So we would like to see some commitment if we're laying out $100 for their fingerprinting. The other thing that you need to know is that that cost is higher than it's been for the last several years. I think it's been like $91.40. The state, in its ongoing infinite wisdom, has decided to not allow school districts or local municipalities like police departments to conduct fingerprinting of employees. They have awarded a contract to a statewide for-profit group that is now running the fingerprinting business in New York State. So instead of coming here to be fingerprinted, they would have to go to this company, which has an office in Kingston and also has an office in Poughkeepsie, to be fingerprinted. And everybody does, not just our employees. So just, just so you're aware.
I actually do have a question. So with respect to full-time employees who work more than 20 hours per week, the District does not reimburse them for their fingerprinting?
That's correct.
What's the rationale?
Because they're making a salary that's, we feel, is significant enough that they can pay their own, but people who are maybe only making $15,000 a year, we don't want that to be a disincentive to be taking a part-time job with us, really.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to accept a list of New York State certified impartial hearing officers for the Dutchess, for Dutchess County for the 2015-16 school year as updated by the New York State Education Department in accordance with Section 200.31, paragraph one, is that?
Subdivision one.
Subdivision one of the Commissioner's Regulations for the purpose of conducting special education impartial hearings with compensation of such impartial hearing officers in accordance with Board policy.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Shaw Perelson May &amp; Lambert, LLP, Attorneys at Law, as school attorneys for the 2015-16 school year at a retainer fee of $30,000, and such attorney as assigned as investigator for Title VII, Title IX, and other matters for the 2015-16 school year if and as needed.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes.
I would also point out to the Board that that's the same retainer fee as we've paid for the last several years.
May I, that's okay. May I have a motion to approve all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded, such as Deputy Treasurer, Central Treasurer, Activity Fund, Claims Auditor, Deputy Claims Auditor, Purchasing Agent, in the amount of $100,000 per employee per occurrence, $1 million per occurrence for the tax collector, and $1 million per occurrence for the treasurer for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Brunel, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as trustee, and Joseph Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, as alternate trustee, representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess County Workers' Compensation Cooperative, effective July 1, 2015, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby appoints Thomas Brunel, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as trustee, and Joseph Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, as alternate trustee, representing the Rhinebeck Central School District for the Dutchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium, effective July 1, 2015, to serve in such capacity until the appointment is rescinded by the Board or another individual is appointed in his place.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. And that concludes the revisational agenda. We'll move on to our regular meeting. And there's a revised agenda at your place. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2015, regular meeting.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have an opportunity for public comment? Is there any members of the public wishing to comment at this time?
Hi, thank you. On behalf of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, I want to take the opportunity to thank you in advance for your consideration of accepting the two RSC grants on your agenda today. One is Project Launch, which is Phase Two of the CLS STEM Lab. That's for $4,445. The other one is the AV Grant for $17,95, that would affect the middle school and high school students. David Wulffin wrote a lovely narrative, and I wanted to just have the opportunity to read this to the thousands of people who are listening. So the question is, how does the project employ hands-on implementation of the sciences, math, and technology? As we continue to implement the Project Lead the Way curriculum to students K through 12, it's the intention of this project to teach all the Project Launch modules at CLS K through 5. This project will add the biomedical and computer science modules newly provided by Project Lead the Way to the engineering modules we implemented in Year One. These modules will prepare the students for the middle school gateway to technology program commencing in grade seven. And he took some information from the Project Lead the Way website. Students will learn important, future-changing lessons, like it's okay to take risks that make mistakes, and it's great to employ critical thinking. As technology becomes part of classroom life, students become more comfortable with it. As teachers and students learn and discover together, education becomes far more engaging. In the Project Lead the Way Launch Classroom, students will ask questions, explore ideas, and solve problems. Students will develop an affinity for STEM subjects through activity, project, and problem-based learning grounded in research-based best practice. So I couldn't have said it better. So thank you to David Wulffin for writing this wonderful grant, and thank you again for your consideration. Thank you. The AV Grant is a lovely, lovely example of collaboration between Steve Johnson, the students in the AV Club, Kate is one of them, with James Erlanger and Giancarlo Calvo Herring. They were really articulate in describing why they wanted this AV Grant, along with Ed Lackey, who was looking to get equipment for both the AV production collectives and the AV club, along with Henry Frischmanet, who wanted to employ this new technology for all of the seventh-grade students. And this was just, I thought, just kind of said it very nicely. How does this project promote problem-based learning? Students will be involved in all aspects of video production, designing concepts and conveyance of ideas to communicate to an audience, writing a script, scouting and shoot location or environment, plan all the camera, lighting, and sound requirements, ensure that students have access to all post-production tools to edit and finalize the project. It was kind of complicated, and it took a lot of go-rounds, and I wanted to thank Steve Johnson for his openness and flexibility, and I wanted to thank the teachers for taking the opportunity to value the recommendations and suggestions of the students. And I think this grant really illustrates all the positives of why I'm happy to be sending my children to the Rhinebeck Central School District. It promotes project-based learning. It gives all kids in seventh grade the opportunity to try something different. I went to see my younger son's video production, and it was chock full of content, and he had never used, never employed anything with video production before. I'm not sure if that's in his future, but at least it's something that he's considering. It's something that he got to try. And so I appreciate the enthusiasm, the excitement, the energy that these teachers bring to our district, and I just wanted to take that opportunity to thank them and the students for looking to promote more and give more to this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to make a comment? Okay. Move on to 2015-16 Board Goal Development Process.
I put on, put this on the agenda just to keep it on our agenda. We have a board workshop on Thursday morning, August 20, following our meeting on Tuesday evening, August 18, where we talked a little bit about it last, at our last meeting, although most of that conversation was kind of a post-mortem on our board goals, or district goals, from this past year. So I wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to focus squarely on a process for developing goals for the coming year. I don't know, we had talked a little bit about possibly having board members submit ideas or draft goal statements ahead of our meeting on the 20th. I still think that's a good idea, at least to prime the pump, to see where we wind up. I don't know whether it's the, I didn't want to commit a board president, whoever that might have been for this year, to any particular task, but I don't know whether the Board would prefer to forward their goal ideas to Mark or to forward them to me. I mean, I'm glad to be the collector of them, but if that's something that you feel more comfortable sending them to the Board President, or he feels more comfortable feeling them and compiling them, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but we ought to make a decision about, yeah, this is what we're going to do, and give people a good month plus in advance to be thinking and sending stuff, as opposed to sending them all night before the workshop. So I just want to put that out on the table for your thinking and consideration.
I'll just add that I'm happy to collect them if, you know, that's the will of the Board, so, Lisa.
I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you, Mark, for understanding that. But I would like to sort of toss it back to you, Joe, and, you know, to see whether we can expect to get some pre-workshop input from the administration. I mean, obviously, you're not going to tell us what our goals are or should be, but if there are areas that you think would be useful for us to consider, that we're coming up with our suggestions, then I think that would be useful for us to do. And, you know, of course, that depends on your time.
Yeah. Well, we'd certainly, I think it's a good idea to ask for that input. We are, because of vacation schedules, we are not convening again as administrative group until the 13th, so it's the week before that. So you won't have them next week, but hopefully by the 18th, if there are some ideas to throw in the stewpot, we'll certainly broach that with them. So thank you for asking for that input as well. Deirdre?
Yeah, I agree with Lisa. That would be great, Joe, to hear from you for ideas, and so I don't, and we've done it different ways in the past, but sharing it with Mark or having someone be the repository is a good idea. I'm wondering, like, as I think of ideas, it would be, while I don't want to do, like, an email back and forth about it, it can be good to hear, you know, see what other people are thinking, because it can help me refine my thoughts. And so I'm just wondering if what we want to do, we could do it where, you know, if you send it to Joe or Mark, then, you know, you just see everybody, or Joe and Mark get stuff, and then, like, ahead of the workshop, you've, like, put it organized, the ideas in some fashion, however, you know, some way that we can share it ahead of time without, without getting into, like, a big discussion on, you know?
Yeah, try not to wordsmith one another's goal.
Right, or play it out why I like this or not like it, because that's what the workshop is, but at least, you know, and then people can feel free also to just throw out, like, I have, like, concepts without really, like, well-defined goals.
Yeah. I just want to absolutely agree with what's already been said. Maybe, didn't we create a Google Doc or something before where we could all see, kind of, exactly, because then we can kind of go back and tailor our own additions after we read what other people have written.
Well, that seemed to be a little clunky when we tried that last year.
Was it? Okay, well, you know, I don't-
That's my recollection.
Yeah, that's what I recall.
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm any more adept at using that than probably you are.
Okay.
With all due respect to you.
We have the expertise.
Yes, we, yes, we do.
Ah, you picked the wrong night to come, Steve. Ah, you picked the wrong day to come, Steve.
So, I would suggest, so as not to embarrass anybody publicly, more than we've already embarrassed them, I would suggest that we share those ideas. I think it's a great idea. I think just copying all is as good an idea as any. If Steve can come up with some more nimble tool for us to use over the next five weeks or so, we can always put it in there, but we'll still have them and have shared them through email, and then before that workshop, whether Mark does it, or I do it, or we both tag-team it, we'll have at least a document maybe to give to you by our meeting on Tuesday night before then, then everybody's got a couple of days to, because then we've got to crystallize it into a smaller number of goals, so. And that would work for me if it suits you.
Okay. Sounds good, cool. Anybody else want to?
Oh, I have one question. So, is this just going to be a running thought process, or do you want a deadline?
Oh, yeah, let's have a deadline.
It should be. Well, I mean.
I think a deadline would be good, but I'm not sure what the deadline should be at this point.
You could have a deadline that, you know, if you want to make a suggestion or, you know, circulate something, do it by this date without any sort of a party that people do it, because we can also do it after the workshop.
Yeah.
Sure. It's not like we won't accept ideas from the floor.
That's the part of the one, ideas on, you know, the nineteenth, eleventh.
Well, just, you know, if I have a few days before the, you know, the Tuesday before the workshop to just assemble them all into one document, that'll be fine, but, you know, I'll.
One week before.
Yeah, like the week before.
The end of the week morning.
I'll send out a date, and then we'll.
Yeah, that week before is Monday, August tenth. That's the beginning of that week, just to give everybody a number to put in their heads. And I would think if, maybe by midweek, the week of August tenth, so that would be the thirteenth, that's also the day that the administrative team is next meeting, so if you could get them to everybody, but certainly Mark as the end product of the email, then that gives him about a week to put them together, and gives us a little bit of time to kind of bang back and forth.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Is there anything else on that? Okay. We'll move on to board committee reports. We'll start with curriculum.
Okay, that's me. We continued with our review of curriculum documents. Marvin Krebs brought us the draft of the ELA district curriculum for grades four, five, and six, as well as, we spent some time talking about the format in which these documents are being assembled and what we will eventually be seeing as a board. So, we talked about not needing to be too granular. In fact, that probably wouldn't be appropriate for the board to be approving curriculum at that level, but we did come to some sort of shared understanding of the kind of presentation this material will be coming to us in. There will be supporting documents available for us to review when we are reviewing the curriculum, and those documents will also be made available to the public eventually when the curriculum is published. We talked again about the incredibly labor-intensive process of this curriculum being written, how it's been very much rooted in teacher work with the curriculum development process, and of course, it's been kind of important professional development opportunity as well for all of our faculty in doing this. We asked some questions about the role of fiction and literature and the arts and imagination in the Common Core standards, and Marvin shared his highly informed and frank views of that with us. One of the things he observed is that visualization and imagination, which are important kind of cognitive resources, we tend to associate with the arts, are in fact important to all the disciplines, and therefore, the work that students do in those areas benefit students in all areas of traditional academic growth. We talked about arts in education, how important their work has been over the years, and he stressed the need for us to think about convergent thinking, the ways in which disciplines come together around tasks that students are faced with, as opposed to divergent or kind of narrowly disciplinary thinking. We did set up some deadlines for the ongoing process. The hope is that we might be able to by July twenty-eighth, look at the entire K through five curriculum. I don't know where we're at with that at this point. That was, you know, when this meeting took place, but the thought was that we do actually want to work through the summer as a committee, continuing to confer with Marvin, and aim for an August eighteenth or early September deadline for looking at the grade six through eight curriculum. The high school's also very, very busy with the ELA curriculum writing at this time. Again, we just want to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of the teachers in this district to make this curriculum authentic, have integrity, and build on the best of the curriculum that we've already had in place. This can't be said often enough. I think that's it. We're just going to continue building our giant binders, and eventually, this material will come to the rest of the board.
All right. Any questions or comments for the curriculum committee? Yes?
So, I appreciate that the board should not be going into.
I tried to be more.
Detail, no, no, no. Detail about, you know, each curricular document. I'm just wondering what format we will receive the document.
There are going to be unit breakdowns, where we're going to see the learning objectives and how they're meeting Common Core standard criteria. That'll be all mapped out for us in the materials we're given to validate or approve, but we won't be approving every single lesson plan.
Sure. And will it be digital?
Oh, presumably, there will be a link made available.
Well, they're going to be going on the website after the board approves them.
So, like, how are we going to, right. I mean, in the past, sometimes we've, you know, gotten really thick.
Well, that's a great question, and I guess I would leave that up to the preference of the board. If you would prefer hard copy, we can kill a few more trees. If you would prefer it digitally, we certainly can, they're being developed digitally, so it's easy enough to send them to you as attachments, if that's the way members of the board want them. We can give them to you in either format.
We actually kind of had that discussion, you remember, one day, and I guess I'm the one that said, misfigured reflection or something. Did I like to make notes on?
Yeah, sure.
And those are really important to me, but on the other hand, I'm not in favor of killing a lot of trees to do this, so. I still would hold out, at least, I'm a member of the committee, so I'm going to have them anyway, but I would still kind of hold out for a few trees being sacrificed in with total curriculum here, just as a thought tonight.
Well, let me make a suggestion, if I could. We will provide them in hard copy to the committee, because we're sitting there at a meeting, going through, and marking them up and whatnot. For the rest of the board, unless you ask us for hard copies, we'll send you digital copies. So, all you have to do is say, you know what, I'd really rather have hard copy, and we'll make you a hard copy. Otherwise, digital will be the default, if that's okay with you guys. If you wanted some other, in some other format, let us know.
Couldn't we also share, if the committee members have a full set, couldn't we share if people want?
Oh, yeah, of course.
And that might, we could take advantage of that existing.
Whatever you want, we can do it. It's really your preference.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it was more really about like what to expect, because we have gotten really thick documents, and given that we, you know, I want to trust the committee to go through maybe, you know, a deeper level of analysis, you know, maybe as Joe's suggestion points out, the rest of the board doesn't necessarily need to do all that. And that being said, though, that we can't forget that our electronics contains all kinds of minerals that are polluting the earth, and how they are extracted from the earth, and so the environmental damage from these things, you know, versus paper, I don't know, so.
And what happens to them after?
Right.
Go to China.
So, anyway, but I appreciate that. It will be options. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? All right. We'll move on to the personnel committee.
I took those minutes, I'll just point out that we are three weeks out from the meeting date, and some of these items are probably outdated by now. I won't discuss the first or the third item on the documents, because they basically nothing to import publicly on that. Second one, we discussed APAR revisions, which at that point, we had the final version of what was supposed to come down from the education department, but we did talk about a couple of things that we were expecting, one of which was the requirement for backup slows in specific testing contests. And the fourth item, we just basically had asked for an amendment on parent participation in the child's case. And I just want to say that it became evident during the course of that meeting how substantial a process it is for those parents to participate. They too, in some areas of this district, we owe them a great deal of grant.
Okay. Questions or comments? Laura.
So, on the parent participation piece, I know that it's been difficult to get parents to participate. I'm just wondering if there's a better way to try to amass people who are interested and don't necessarily know the right way to present themselves for the possibility of getting on these committees. I know personally that there are a number of people who just don't know how these committees get put together, don't know how they can throw their hat and ring, and I don't know whether that's something communications can help out with in terms of getting the word out about if you're interested, K through twelve, to be on hiring committees, so we can contact you based on schedule. I know the PTSO is always on the down to try to find people who are maybe a partner to spend. Maybe there could be kind of like our son, that's the leader of all accounts, no, is the hiring committee, you know, they can let school know, and they can maybe get, you know, like, a long time, and that's all that matters to be.
Just so everybody's aware, traditionally, which doesn't mean that's the way it should continue to be, but traditionally, we've leaned on the PTSO for parents to populate that, and that's kind of a throwback to an earlier day when shared decision-making actually meant something in the state of New York, and still is a requirement for every school district, although not apparently for our friends at the State Education Department so much anymore. But the, through the shared decision-making process, PTSOs were anointed as the parent, the official parent representation group, so consistent with that, we tried to lean on the PTSO for those people. It may be time, I'm not convinced that it necessarily is, but it may be time to consider a route to parents other than through the PTSO, if, assuming people are feeling like we're not getting the kind of parent participation that we need, and I'm not saying that, and one part of our discussion, the personnel committee speaking very broadly, was the advantages of a revolving door of parent participants on hiring committees versus people who've done it a number of times, and actually, they're kind of well-trained, I mean, they know the drill, they know how it works, they're very effective, as opposed to having new people entering the process and having to train them. I mean, again, that was just a discussion we had at the personnel committee meeting. I think it's something that we ought to consider before we decide as a district to put a full court press on bringing new faces into the process on a regular basis. Yeah, I'm not saying that's problematic, we just need, I think we should just make a deliberate decision one way or the other, and there certainly are ways that we can come up with, with or without the, with all due respect to the communications committee, to generate lists of people. But I think we also want to consider people who have some kind of basis for what they're doing, and when we've gone to the bullpen on a consistent basis, we have people who are very highly skilled members of an interview team, but that's not to say we can't consider other ideas, Raj. We did not draw, and correct me if I'm wrong, personnel people, we did not draw a conclusion that the way it's working now is bad, or that doing it a different way is the way we should go. We just start a conversation.
It was basically to get the members of the committee up to speed on the way that this process works, and the way that decisions are made about how it should work.
Yeah, we can continue. I had that conversations. Not a dead issue by any means.
I just wanted to add that I think perhaps it's poorly understood more broadly in our community what the function of a building-level planning team is in relation to PTSO, and what the different sort of routes are for people who want to get involved in these processes. So, rather than really focus on that issue, I think, you know, the hiring committee's issue, maybe more broadly helping new families or people who just haven't yet gotten involved in the process, helping them understand, there are many different kinds of engagement that are possible and different avenues, and that might allow us, because I know sometimes BLPT is a place also where parents are drawn from, this kind of work.
Diane?
I think both the PTSO and the PTO is communicating too, so it may be a good challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, it may be a communications issue as much as anything else, so.
It might be worth talking.
Hey, we already have an agenda item for this coming year.
Okay. Anything else for personnel? Okay. Move on to good news. Joe?
No, no, I'll let the board go first.
I'm sorry, let the other answer.
For those of us who were there at graduation, it's always a wonderful time, a happy time. I personally want to thank you for your speech and representing us so well, and having actually the courage to take on what are the important parts, the points in education before the group that needs to hear about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may continue also, I'd like to, I wish you were here to congratulate Mr. Lackey, who did a phenomenal job in his speech to the two, directly to the graduating class. Everybody here knows where I come from, so I sit there always watching the class to see if they're paying attention, and as I said to Lisa afterward, what he had them, her comment was, he had us all. So, it was a wonderful, compelling, that's what makes a good teacher, a connection, and he had the connection.
Okay. Other good news?
Yeah, I just want to thank Steve Jensen. We finally got our new website launched, and all the feedback that I'm getting thus far, now granted that we're not fully populated with staff and students during the summer, but anybody who's gotten in there and started to kind of tinker around with it has had good things to say. You know, we're finding, every day I find something like, hey, where was that? It used to be on our old website, it somehow didn't make the transition, but Steve and Ed Shin were the consultant that we'd been working with, they're very responsive, usually the next day, it's up there someplace, and it's, I found it very easy to use and a lot more function-filled than what we were using. So, so far, thumbs up to Mr. Jensen, and you have at your place a letter that we sent out to the staff today to let them know what's going on here, so onward and upward. There's a long time coming, but we get there.
Thank you.
All right. Other good news? Okay. Seeing no, move on to old business. Joe?
I have one. Did you have any? Just, I sent you out an email today regarding the board committee meeting schedule, so if you have not gotten back to me yet saying, basically what I did was send you the committees and who's on them, and when we met last year, and asked you if that works for you, or if it does not. If it doesn't, we'll re-majigger the schedule. If it does, then that's a starting point for me to actually start to put together a schedule for the year. So, if you have not had a chance to get back to me, since I sent it out just a little earlier today, please get back to me within the next day or two, let me know. We'll either change up the schedule, or I'll take the form of year schedule and start plugging in dates, get it out to you, and then we'll finalize that. As I mentioned, I'd like to be able to see if we can schedule at least one meeting of each committee during the summer if everybody's vacation schedule. each committee during the summer if everybody's vacation schedules and other schedules mesh. But I thought I would start with our last year's schedule. So give me your feedback on that, and we'll hopefully be able to start in on that very soon.
Do you want us to tell you what date during the summer we want to meet on the committees that we're on?
Well, I thought what I would do would be to start with when the committees meet, to see if that works. If not, then we can always freelance on another date, as we do, as you all know, we do during the year when there's a conflict or a couple of people out of the three can't make it. So we try to grab another date that works. So I, my sense is, let's lay it out, and then we'll massage it and try to come up with something. I would also caution you that the summer's a little, more than a little more challenging because not only do you have your own, you know, family, work, vacation commitments, but the administrators who are on those committees also are going places. So we'll try to patch something together, but let's start with kind of where we think we're going to be on a regular basis, and then we'll work from there.
The only comment I just had is that with Audit and Finance meeting on the same day, which is.
I had the same question.
Yeah, so I was going to email, but it just easier seemed to just say it out to the various people who it impacts. And Audit doesn't necessarily, we didn't this year meet every month anyway. My biggest concern about it, aside from like a very long day for me, was just the, that sometimes Finance, you know, I felt like a little cramped, like during budget season, it gives Finance only an hour and a half. And so, you know, it affects other people too, so I'm not saying it has to be a different day, but I just thought we might then avoid any conflicts in the future, because we did have to reschedule a couple of times for various reasons I can't even remember. But that's just another thought.
Well, and I think that that combination is an archive from when Audit and Finance were the same.
Right, right, right. Okay, that's right.
So it's fine if we need to change the time. It would actually be nice not to feel like we're rushing you guys out and standing in the.
Waiting, right.
Okay, so then, given that, and I was hoping to flush out whether that was an issue, I remember we had a number of conversations during the year about another hour and a half, right here. And since I am not a sitting member of the Audit Committee, for which I'm internally grateful, I will, I'll task my right-hand guy here to come up with a different meeting date and time, send it out to the three of you and Tom, see what works for you guys, and then we'll just plug in a different date.
Or we could change Finance to be on a different day.
Yeah, well, I guess we could.
It could be either way.
It'd be easier for me in a way, so. You just said Thursday's better. Thursday would be, if so is possible. I don't know if we do committee meetings on Thursday.
Well, let me check my schedule.
All right, you check your schedule.
Okay, we'll kind of mess around with that, maybe that'd work better. Okay, great, thank you.
Any other old business? All right, you have another opportunity for public comment. All right, move on to others. Deirdre.
I have another. I mentioned this informally at the beginning of the meeting, but I've given you all a chapter from a book called Our Kids: The American Dream in Crisis by Robert Putnam. He's a political scientist and professor of public policy at the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard. And it just came out a few months ago. It's a really interesting book that tries to look at the differential in terms of social mobility and equality for young people coming up through the public school system. He compares sort of post-war public schooling with what he has been able to observe as a political scientist today. And I've just given you one chapter of the book on schooling in particular. It's a pretty, even though I gave you all the footnotes, because I can't give you the research without the footnotes, but it's actually a pretty quick read, and I hope it'll be of interest. It's summertime, maybe people can take it with them to the beaches, Joe suggested. But I actually found it quite thought-provoking, and it seems to me that, you know, given that we think about, we're constantly sort of being reminded that our mission as public educators is equality of access and opportunity for all of our students. It struck me as really being quite timely, this book coming out now. So I wanted to share it with you.
Deirdre.
Thank you for taking the time to photocopy this chapter for us. And you had said in an email, you know, is there any interest in kind of coordinating some way for people to get together to have discussion, either on this or something else? And then just say that, you know, I think that's a really interesting idea to, that I would support, you know, some informal way for people to gather and talk about an issue. So, yeah, thank you.
I'll just add too, I apologize for not responding to the email, but I think it's a great idea if we can, you know, try to read it, and we can maybe set some time aside to get together about it, to discuss it. Certainly no commitment on anybody's part that if, you know, we want to, that's great. If not, that's okay too. But maybe in our next meeting, we can, we've all had a chance to at least take a look at it, and then we can maybe decide if we have time to look at it and discuss it.
School board with club.
Right, okay. So, is there any other items of other? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to action items. Is there anyone who'd like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
By Deirdre. By Lisa. Discussion. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept two grant awards from Rhinebeck Science Foundation, one in the amount of $17,095 in support of the implementation of the Video Production Emerging Videography Techniques Grant, as submitted by Ed Lackey and Steve Jensen, and one in the amount of $4,445 in support of the implementation of Project Lead the Way, K-25 Launch Program at CLS Grant Year Two, both as stipulated.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Said.
By Lisa. Discussion. Laura.
I just wanted to comment on this grant. Part of it is that the idea is to go out into the community and provide services to our community members who may or may not have access to types of video programming and design. I think it's a really fantastic idea, and I'd love that our students are trying to find ways to get involved. So I'd love to hear more about that as it unfolds, according to what we're really great to hear. Congratulations.
Lisa.
I just wanted to say that this, as is the case for all of the initiatives that we run the Science Foundation for, is something that really enriches the programs that the school district can deliver to our students. And you should not be, you should not take for granted the generosity that they've shown. Many districts are not fortunate enough to have a group like Rhinebeck Science Foundation and are poorer ones, so I think that we should recognize that.
All right, and I agree, thank you to the Science Foundation. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of additional department chairs and advisors for Rhinebeck High School for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Said.
By Lisa. Any discussion? Deirdre.
Yeah, so it's just exciting to see the proliferation of clubs in our high school, new ones, and, you know, also, of course, the next motion, or the motion after that talks about clubs at Buckley Middle School, but I would just, I know this has come up before in various places, encourage it, some mechanism be created to sort of just keep track of how often clubs are meeting and what they're doing. And because we do have a lot of clubs, and I think it's terrific, but it's been said before at the Board that a way to just know how many kids are involved and what the students are doing and how frequently would be a good thing. And I don't want to imply any particular kind of measure about the efficacy of any club by saying that, because there are different ways that clubs operate and do what they do, and they're all, you know, have terrific potential. So I don't want that to be a comment on like, you need to meet every month, or you need to have X number of people, or do X, Y, and Z. I just think, you know, knowing at budget time, when we have had to look at cutting things sometimes, or adding a club here, or cutting a club or a sport there, that having some record of how the clubs are operating seems like a good idea to me. However, again, whatever measure might be used to determine their success. Otherwise, I think it's fantastic. I think kids advocating for new clubs and teachers getting out there and doing it is just fantastic.
All right, other comments? All right, all is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of chairs for Catholicism Elementary School for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved?
By Deirdre. By Lisa. Any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of team leaders and advisors for Buckley Middle School for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Oh, 15-16, actually I should say 15-16.
So should the previous motion.
Should be 15-16.
Yes, so should. All right, so for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
Said.
By Lisa. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve as a first reading the consideration of modifications to Board Policies Number 5280 Inner Class of Athletics and Number 5300 District Code of Conduct.
So moved?
By Lisa. Any discussion?
Lots of hands up. Go ahead. I mean, he's the one who's, I just thought, woo!
All right, whoever was first over here.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that.
Joe, can you tell us how the proposed changes to the Code of Conduct came to be particularly interested in the changing of the informal code, the dress code?
Okay, so I'll assume you didn't see my email of, hey, this afternoon, that's right. Yeah, Deirdre had asked the same question, the email, and, but I'm glad to re-explain it here. There was a, there was concern raised this past, this past spring, when the weather started getting warmer, and young people of the female persuasion began wearing strapless tops or sundresses to school. And per our Code of Conduct 2014-15, as you can see from the crossouts, that particular item of apparel was, was not permitted under the Code of Conduct. So there were some issues over that. I think the larger issue beyond sundresses was an understanding, a perception, whatever word you want to use, that in some way, that particular section of the dress code was, was not gender neutral. That articles of female apparel were being, again, in a very, this is not a long list of prohibited articles of clothing, but that, that girls' apparel was, had been called out as not permissible, and there were, there were few, if any, male articles of apparel that were being sanctioned, okay? Now, as somebody who's been here for 17 years, I've seen this dress code changed quite a bit over that period of time. And I remember and brought up to this committee the fact that about 10, 12 years ago, the big, the big deal was spaghetti straps, which were banned, do you remember that, Diane? Probably do. Which were banned under this part of the code and were taken out. So I think this, this represents an effort to not, not just to respond to that particular concern that was raised earlier this year, but to rewrite that section of the, of the code to make it gender neutral. And that's, that was the reason, the purpose, the intent, and hopefully the, the outcome of that particular change. But that's kind of in a nutshell what precipitated the discussion and the change in that second paragraph of the, of the dress code, so to speak.
Laura.
So I understand these changes, and my question is that we have to keep this a little bit gray, because headlines and all of those kinds of things change all the time for both genders. I'm just wondering about how it gets interpreted on a practical level, and then, you know, how consistent is the use of this policy? Because what's caught one day is got away with for two weeks, and, you know, so I'm just unclear about really how this, in a practical way.
Yeah, well, I mean, to be perfectly frank, the whole thing's a gray area. And, you know, had, had not a member of the staff at some point said to the powers that be at the high school, hey, there's a girl wearing a strapless sundress, it's against the Code of Conduct, you need to do something about it, it may very well have gone unnoticed. Or, you know, you know, another kind of a class, a question about school dress codes in general, in general, is how can a kid make it through five instructional periods, nobody said anything, and then period six, somebody picks up on it, and now there's this or so. So clearly, there's, and this is not an indictment of Rhinebeck High School or Buckley Middle School at all. I mean, I lived this in a previous life as a high school principal, but there is, to put it mildly, a lack of consistency across most staffs, and I won't just blame it on teachers either, teaching staffs, non-instructional staff, about fidelity to a dress code. So however, when somebody flags something and it gets reported to the principal, then if it's in the code and it says it's not allowed, you got to do something about it. I'd say that the, the best hedge against inconsistency is the fact that in a small school district, we have two building principals whose ultimate responsibility is our kids adhering to or violating the dress code. The building principal in the high school, the building principal in middle school tends not to be an issue at the elementary school. I'm not saying it couldn't at some point, but tends not to be. So ultimately, they're making that judgment call, is this, does this cross a line, does it not cross a line? Does this, is this interfering with the, with the, is this a material disruption to the learning environment? Again, it is gray. I mean, there's no way to have anything in a, in a dress code that doesn't have a lot of flexibility. We can call it gray, we can call it flexible. But I think a building principal is going to be as consistent as anybody else in the building. Certainly you can't count on a staff of 40 people to be consistent across that, that entire spectrum of the staff. It just, realistically, it just doesn't happen. But if somebody's going to be consistent, it's the building principal. Yeah, we dealt with this three weeks ago, we dealt with this two months ago, we dealt with this last fall, we dealt with this last spring, we're being consistent, was a problem then, it's a problem now, except insofar as the wording in the, in this has changed. And I would not expect sanctions against girls wearing strapless sundresses next spring. More likely, because we've been there, done that, dealt with that, the code's been changed, it appears not to be materially disruptive, did not appear ever to be materially disruptive. However, it was a violation of the code, the way it was written then. So this gives us the flexibility to say, is this really disrupting the learning process? You know, the other issue that's embedded in here, and at the risk of opening a can of worms, is that there's the implication that, that the way young ladies dress is in some way, shape, or form responsible for the distracted behavior of young men. And that's something that came up in our discussion, and that's a great point. And yeah, it's not girls' responsibility not to distract boys, to just kind of, kind of cut to the chase, okay? And again, hopefully, this language gives us the latitude to kind of get away And again, hopefully, this language gives us the latitude to kind of get away from that whole thing conceptually. We'll see how it works. And we'll be back here next year, hopefully not having to change this, but we will be back here one way or the other, looking at that code of conduct. So we'll try it out and see how it works.
You got a hand up, all right.
I just want to say, you know, I appreciate that the administration was so responsive to the young women's concerns about this and this sort of taking the risk, a lot of the high school students to show their disagreement with the policy and to speak to Ed Davenport about it, I think was terrific on their part, and I really appreciate that he and the committee that looks at the code of conducts and that you took the time to really take those issues seriously. It has come a long way. In my years on the school board, I was sort of understanding of kind of what messages were given by having a code like this. And I really appreciate that tonight you mentioned the way that the term materially disruptive gets used in a way that then really, the code is responsible for sort of sexualizing girls' dress by being interpreted that way. So to have addressed it and changed it is, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
I have two others, although I'm not ready to take the dress code. On pages, page eight, but it deals with the language that begins on page seven. My understanding and assumption is that the behavior that is listed on pages seven and eight, I guess it pairs off the nine as well, is conduct being engaged in on school property during school activities, or I suppose including school activities off school property as well. But, and most of these items either explicitly or implicitly deal with things that are specific to school time, such as running in the hallways or lying to schoolgirls, and things of that nature. But items, item eleven on page eight kind of raised a question in my mind as to whether that's, it's limited to that, it's intended to be limited to that, because while, actually, it occurred to me because of item twelve, possessing, consuming, selling, distributing, or exchanging alcoholic beverages or illegal substances or being under the influence thereof, or possessing drug paraphernalia, those are things that are illegal for underage students. But smoking a cigarette, cigar pipe, using chewing or smokeless tobacco, or using any cigarette is not illegal activities per se. Now, of course, we can prohibit students from engaging in those activities in school or during school activities outside of the school. But I wanted to make sure that it was the intention of the code, not to reach beyond that and to reach out to students on their own time, not involved in school-related activities. And the reason that I'm raising this question is because there's a section of the code of conduct dealing with athletics, you know, after-school athletics, which does reach beyond the activities of the students during the school that are on school property, involved in school, specifically school-related activities. So, you know, we may not approve, we as a board may not approve cigarette smoking and other forms of tobacco use. I'm not sure that we should be, we should be regulating students' conduct in those areas outside of the school. So really, it's a question as to whether that was the intention.
Well, no, it's not the intention. And I believe if you go to the bottom of page six, the last line on page six, which wraps around to the top of page seven, "The board recognizes the need to make its expectations for student conduct while on school property or engaged in a school function specific or clear." We're not talking about, in this code of conduct, sanctioning a kid who's downtown at 5:00 p.m. on a Saturday afternoon and is smoking a cigarette, that that's a violation of this code of conduct, unless it has some specific nexus with the school. For example, a fight downtown on Saturday at 5:00 p.m. that winds up carrying its way into school on Monday morning clearly is connected with the school, and there's a basis for some kind of disciplinary response on a part of the school to that. A kid who is doing the former, participating in the former conduct, if there's no nexus to the school, then it's none of our business. Other than we're concerned that a kid is using a substance that's potentially hazardous to his or her health, but in terms of the code of conduct and a disciplinary sanction, that's not part of this code of conduct. The athletic code, that's a whole different subgenre of this discussion. And again, without opening this bag of worms today, although if you want to, we can, but because we've been down this road more than a couple times over the last few years, but there is an argument to be made that an athlete who is engaging in an unhealthy behavior outside of school, there is in fact a nexus with the school, or at least with that athletic program. But that's a whole other conversation. That's not the purpose of this language here.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
And then my last question is about fourteen E on page nine regarding individual devices and us, district transportation. I read to me the school buses, although I'm basically regarding that. So I always get a little squidgy when I see language like glorifies or promotes, because that's so subjective. What does glorifies or promotes mean when you're talking about drug, alcohol, tobacco use, or violence? I can certainly understand conduct that's materially disruptive, conduct that is harmful, conduct that's threatening, but whose opinion is the one that counts when you're talking about glorifying or promoting drug, alcohol, tobacco use, or violence? And, you know, things that ten years ago might have been considered to have done more of those might not today be considered to. So I'm a little, I'm not so sure.
Well, it would be my pleasure to give you the context for that discussion.
Yes, please.
Because that discussion was almost, if not more, robust than the discussion about strapless tops, just to give you a, to give you a context and just know that there were a fair number of parents, not to segue back into our other conversation, but there were parents from each of the three schools represented there, as there were students from the high school and administrators and teachers from all of the building. So it was, it was a pretty broad-based representation, which is why we want that, obviously. So a concern was raised from an elementary school parent that, her concern that, that, how can I say, I want to measure my words here, that children should not be allowed to have cell phones on the buses. Because a student with a smartphone that has wireless capability could pull up a pornographic or at least suggestive picture and show it to another kid next to him or her on the school bus, and that that would be a terrible thing, and yeah, et cetera, et cetera. So we should ban all cell phones on school buses. That seemed to be a bit overreactive for any number of reasons that I probably don't have to go into here. So this change in language was, that was the genesis for this change in language. And I think after, again, a pretty robust conversation about this, I think we steered this conversation away from saying, yeah, just get rid of all the cell phones and our kids will be, will be safe in the bus world. And we're just talking about the bus.
Yes.
We're not talking about being materially disruptive to the educational process on the bus. There's only one process that's happening on the bus, and that's getting from point A to point B, okay? However, I think the concession to this, the suggestion that all cell phones be banned on our buses and game boys and iPods and any other digital device you could possibly think of, it should just be a technology-free zone so no one's exposed to something that a parent might not want them to be exposed to, was to say, and actually, we, that the language that you quoted, Lisa, a couple of minutes ago, is the exact same language that's in the dress code regarding offensive articles of apparel. In fact, we decided consciously to take it from there and put it here. If it's a standard for clothing, it ought to be a standard for other stuff that our kids might be exposed to. And the other nod to this concern was the comment about the use of this media is personal and is not to be shared with others. So don't be blaring a vulgar rap song on the bus where other kids are exposed to it and can hear it. If you do, that's a violation of this code of conduct. And you, young man, or young lady, may actually not be allowed to bring your device on the bus, but to tell every kid on the bus you can't have this stuff, when these devices are ubiquitous and, for the most part, are used for at least benign, if not constructive reasons, seem to me, seem to us, to the committee, to be a reach to go that far. So this was a nod to that concern about my kid may be exposed to something I don't want him or her to be exposed to on the bus.
I appreciate your explanation, and I do see why the discussion went towards having a parallel between the language of the dress code and this language. I do think, though, that there's a distinction to be made because of the very wide panoply of digital content that's available to the kids, not all of which is necessarily going to cause the concerns that whoever was raised the issue may have had, you know, started out with, let's just all ban all cell phones. Give you an example. There's a thriving community on Facebook advocating in favor of legalization marijuana. And I know, because my son's talked to me about it, that this is something that he and his cohort talk about and think about, and that they're also all, or many of them are, on Facebook and read about legalization efforts in various parts of the country with great interest. And I would not like to think that if a student were sitting on the school bus reading the Facebook page on the cell phone about legalization of marijuana, that that would subject him to discipline, whether he just looks at it by himself or he shows it to his friends sitting around him on the bus. I'm not saying that that will necessarily happen, but I am concerned about having language that gives their, gives an opening to happen. I'm always concerned about prohibitory language that may be used in a way that was not the intention of the board. So I think that it's, now, I would be uncomfortable voting to approve that language. I would like to suggest a conversation, you know, about possibly limiting that. As I said, I certainly understand the materially disruptive piece of it, and agree with it. But, but the other just concerns.
But if we could, or they could find language that would be somewhat less restrictive, then we'd be open to be more interested in supporting it, is that right?
I would, yes.
I sympathize with your feeling, you know, if you give somebody an opportunity to abuse something, somebody's going to do it somewhere along the line.
Diane?
I think the concern comes up because this came up, you know, a high school student reading that Facebook page is one thing, but maybe if you're riding on an elementary bus, an impressionable third grader, fourth grader, is sharing it with them, that internet thing, I wouldn't be happy with that. So maybe the point is, is look at that committee, not on the school bus. And I think that there's a point that maybe it shouldn't be there, because it shouldn't necessarily be the case that at that point.
I think the feeling from the discussion at this, from this committee, was that linking that to the last sentence, which says, "This is for yourself. If you're reading a Facebook page on the bus, whether you're a second grader or a twelfth grader, if you're not sharing it, showing it to other people, there's no issue. You can look at whatever you want to look at. Nobody's even going to know what you're looking at, much less care what you're looking at. It's when you start showing it to other people or playing something where the whole bus is hearing something that is objectionable, et cetera, et cetera." I think all members of that committee said, you know what, nobody else but the looker or the listener is privy to what he's looking at or she's listening to. There's no issue, because we're not, we're not trying to invade people's personal space and get in their minds to know, or their ears to know what they're listening to. It's when other people are exposed to something that somebody might find objectionable is where, for at least for this committee, it crosses the line. And you're right, the concern was, at an elementary level, certainly more of an issue there than at maybe at the middle school or the high school level, but I could, without trying too hard, I could come up with something that would fall under this language that could happen on a high school bus that is apparent. I don't want my kid being exposed to that. Whether it's reasonable or kind of at the edge, if I'm a parent and I don't want my kid exposed to that, and Johnny who's looking at this is showing my kid, here, look, 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 you got to see this, you got to see this, that's where it crosses a line. Keep it to yourself. Wear earbuds. I mean, nobody wants to hear the rap music that you're playing. It's just not something that other people want to be exposed to. So don't expose other people to it. I, again, I'm just giving you what I think was the rationale behind this committee's recommendation, is that regardless of what you're looking at, if you keep it to yourself, no one else but you is going to know that you're looking at it, listening to it. As soon as you start sharing it with the world, then it is our responsibility that you not do that.
Deirdre? I'm actually thinking about the discussion we had a meeting or so back about the use of the district email accounts and privacy rights of students, right, when they're using a district account. I don't know if there's any analogy here or not, but when they're on the bus, being transported between schools, they're not really in a private space. They're not in their home, they're not, they don't have the kind of freedom to, you know, belt out whatever it is they're listening to, right, that they would at home. So it strikes me, we've got a kind of a delicate situation here, where the rights of the privacy of the individual and then the rights of the community in terms of expecting a school space to, you know, be safe in ways that we can all respect one another. This is, I think, the difficulty in finding the language that addresses those concerns, right? I think honestly, we have an issue with some families already being anxious about kids riding on school buses, and the reality is that some of it comes down to these kinds of concerns, you know, like what is my child hearing, seeing, being exposed to? So I think that the code of conduct in terms of trying to find wording that sufficiently gets to the spirit as opposed gets to the spirit, as opposed to the letter of the law, I, I support that idea. It's just a question of how is it actually going to be applied, and how, and even what kind of mechan, like, how are we gonna even know when it's being, when infractions are occurring, right? Are bus monitors going to be engaged, or, I mean, is it just one student reporting on another, you know?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you exactly how we're gonna know.
Yes, okay.
Because we're not advocating, nor is there anything in this code of conduct that even addresses bus monitors. We don't have them.
Good.
In our school district, we think that paying bus monitors is a waste of money, that we'd rather be spending it on after-school clubs and stuff that's much more constructive than, than babysitting on the bus. And by and large, it's not necessary. So you're gonna hear about it when Johnny shows Susie something, and Susie goes home and tells mom, Johnny showed this to me on the school bus. Now we got an incident. We're not gonna know about it otherwise.
That's right.
To be, to be quite perfectly frank, the bus driver, he's keeping his eyes on the road. He's not looking at what kids are looking at. Maybe he hears something that is vulgar and may, may report a kid, I heard, it could happen, forget the digital stuff, it come out of a kid's mouth. And he may, he or she may get written up for vulgar language on the bus, okay?
Right.
But where it's gonna come from is one student complaining about having seen X on the bus, because another student showed it to him, lent him his earbud, say, here, listen to this, that's where it's gonna come from. And gotta tell ya, in spite of this parent's concern, either this stuff isn't happening very much, or it's not being reported very much. I don't know, because I'm not the bus monitor.
Can I just add one thing? If there's some way to communicate that, in a way, this is just an issue of respect, you know, respect for differences that exist amongst the members of our community. Like, I think that that's, for me at least, that seems to me really the issue. That whatever our own personal beliefs are about any of these hot-button issues, and we all have a right to our own views, we have to respect the diversity of opinions and backgrounds that, you know, our students come from.
Do you trust, are you for?
Yeah, no, I, I really appreciate Lisa bringing this up, because I think it's, it's a good point. I like your point to talk about respect, which is in the, a word that's used in the modification to the dress code. And so I think it could be refined, because I, I wanna say two things. One is that I, the, I think, I do appreciate that our administrators do use, the code of conduct met says that punishment is progressive and contextualized, based on age of the student and the circumstances, and that I think, in many ways, they really do do that, so that's important, that's always there. But I think another thing that sometimes can be said is, it's policy, and that's what policy is. And reading this, I, I think, the way the end and the or is written, it is that digital content, et cetera, et cetera, is not permitted to be used thereupon. So, you know, Lisa's example, I think, would be a violation of the policy as it's written, even if it's not the intention, really, to punish that kind of, that kind of use of digital media. So I think refining it to be more explicit about the intention is, is a good idea. I, I think that might also help our administrators, as they enforce things that maybe sometimes they say, well, it's in the policy, so I have to enforce it, even if that wasn't exactly the intention.
Lisa.
Thank you, I, I appreciate your putting it that way. I think you're completely right, Jessica. And I just wanna, I'm gonna bounce off something that you said, in order to, that, you know, since the point of this, of this particular subsection of the code of conduct as a whole, I think is to facilitate respect of students to faculty and staff and one another, I think that it's important not to lose sight of the fact that the students themselves are also entitled to respect.
Yeah.
And as parents, we sometimes forget that our kids have opinions and views, and that, and those opinions and views may not be identical to ours. And if we're going to err, I'd rather err on the side of giving students the opportunity to exercise as many of the freedoms and rights that we consider essential to our own lives, than err on the side of potentially offending the sensibilities of somebody, even if those sensibilities happen to be mine. So, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't necessarily share every opinion that my child has, but I'd rather hear him, or give him the opportunity to express them. I'd rather give the kids on the buses the opportunity to talk about things, or share information in conversation with one another, as long as they're not disrupting or causing offense or harm to other people around them, without the concern that they may be doing something that's a violation of the code of conduct. So, you know, let's, let's write codes of conduct that keep that in mind as well. I also wanna say that, you know, as a parent of a teenager, who will either been here or are about to be here, that while we may think that it's an easy thing simply to tell kids, well, keep it to yourself, in practice, what we think is easy for teenagers to do isn't always so easy for them to do. And sharing with one another is often irresistible to them. And we shouldn't, shouldn't kid ourselves that just because they can be that, that they necessarily want.
Diane.
I think that's a good point, that even though a high school didn't let the person that's watching something, it's irresistible for that sixth grader in an elementary school to see what they're, they're doing. So, you know, while your example, I mean, it's a good example, I don't know how you reworded this, but, you know, if they were watching graphics or something to themselves, you know, that's okay, so he's just watching themselves.
Right.
So I don't know how, you know, that's the problem with this.
Right.
Your example may be harmless, but there's a million situations that are unnecessary.
Yeah.
And I'm just, and you can tell that it's not a big issue on bus, because there are a lot of issues. I'm sure there's a lot of kids that don't go home and say, oh, yes, well, I saw this. You know, I'm sure that doesn't happen all the time either, but, you know, it is the school's responsibility, but kids are there under their, their watch, and the buses, they're watching. So I don't know that just changing, you know, changing this paragraph to make it, as long as it's, it's themselves, that's okay, because that's another thing.
So is there a way to address this issue without banning the phones entirely? Which I thought was a more egregious breach of freedom than the ones we've talked about here tonight, but just my thought.
Well, it may require more thought than tonight, really, we could modify, but just like, to give an example of something that maybe could, you know, what if it was that use of digital material, you know, that is, that includes sexual innuendo, glorifies or promotes drug, alcohol, tobacco use or violence, and is materially disruptive, is not permitted to be used, or to be shared with others on the bus? Like, what if we just say it isn't really? So that might be still a subjective call, so, so my issue would be, like, I wouldn't want, I didn't want, I wouldn't want my second grader elementary school student to have the kid next to him play these really violent video games on his phone, and, you know, show it to my kid. I might wanna, you know, I might not complain to the principal, I might call the parent of that child and say, could you ask not to do that, or tell my kid to sit somewhere else or something. There are other strategies to employ, but, you know, whether another parent thinks that's materially disruptive or not, might be a little battle that you'd have. But maybe that's the point we're trying to say. And I, you know, again, I would agree with Diane, that pornography is materially disruptive, and maybe even disrespectful, or add something about respect. It's clearly disrespectful, so maybe just cutting to the heart of that, it might be an option. But it might require more thought, or, and I know you probably don't wanna have to, like, dabble in the community.
Well, I, actually, I don't intend to, at least not this year, but, but I will take a crack at finessing this language based on this discussion, and you will be the judges of whether I've been successful doing that or not. And if I'm not able to, what I would respectfully suggest is that when we do a final reading of this two weeks from tonight, that you, if, if we're still divided under this, instead of trying to wordsmith it, and wordsmith it, wordsmith it, just say, we don't want to change this this year, take it back to the committee, we'll, we'll deal with it again next year. Because there's, there's a very, there's a very definite timeline in play here. We need to wrap this up in time to get changes in the student handbooks, get it out to parents. So we can't let this spill into, in my opinion, it's, it would not be wise to let it spill into the start of the school year. But let me take a crack at it and see if we can address the, the concerns that you've raised, at least satisfactorily for the time being, and then we can move on. And if we can't, we'll just say, well, you know, we won't change that, and we'll, we'll continue to talk about it. Is that, that okay with everybody?
Yes, thank you.
That's good, that's very good.
Diane, has her hand up.
I just want to thank the committee, because the first one, committee worked on that code of conduct many years ago. Also, like, this is a really difficult thing to work on, so I want to thank the committee for that. And as far as the dress code, I appreciate them taking out some of the shocks, buying shirts, and not being in the store, and I appreciate taking out all specific clothes and, you know, the wording talking about the protection, respect of the student, I think that's really what it kind of found to be, and that's what's important, and I appreciate.
All right, so all those in favor?
I have one other thing.
Yes.
It's not about the code, it's about the, in the plastic athletics. I appreciate that they're formally changing athletic placement process, what we talked about this last time, about notification to the parents, about the timeline, the new qualifications are.
Yes, we did. Yes, well, if, if an email hasn't gone home yet, I saw a draft that John showed me last week. There was an issue with what was posted on the website, our, our new website, and the, the link in the letter was actually a link to our old website, which is now not, not up and running, so, and I don't know if John's talked to you at all, I know you guys have been kinda, kinda going in opposite directions too. So John had crafted a letter to send home to parents of this coming year's seventh and eighth graders about a number of items related to athletics, but specifically, if you're interested in, in playing up, or at least pursuing that, please call the office, give us your name, we will send you more information, and those, and those students will get the more granular detail of how this works, that 90% of the students aren't interested in, in the first place. So they'll get that information before the end of July. That was, that was John's plan, so.
So it has all been compiled?
It's been compiled, it's just, it's a case of making sure that the reference in his letter is actually available on the website, so when people click on that, they go to the right place, and then if they're interested in pursuing this app slash selection, selection classification further, and Steve already has a list of, I don't know, you know, a handful, like, five or six kids who've already expressed to him they're interested in doing that, then those kids, and anybody else who says, yeah, I'd like to know more about that, will then get the, the deeper dive into this process. So we haven't forgotten about that.
Diane.
Excuse me?
She's freezing here, darling.
I couldn't. Like, what's it worth to?
She's freezing.
All right, all those in favor of this motion? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the reappointment of part-time teachers for the 2015-16 school year, effective September 1st, 2015?
So moved.
By Deere. By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the reappointment of part-time non-instructional personnel for the 2015-16 school year, effective September 1st, 2015?
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute instructional and non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year?
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Maureen Mans, Bulkeley Middle School English Language Arts Academic Intervention Services teacher, for the purpose of retirement as stated, effective July 1st, 2015?
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa. I'd just like to indicate that Ms. Mans is here with us this evening, and I would like to thank her for her seven years of service to the district.
Thank you.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve mentors for the 2015-16 school year?
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2015 program work and modifications to summer 2015 special education service providers?
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of the 2015-16 CSE/CPSE committee chairs, CSE/CPSE parent members, and CSE/CPSE committee members?
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Nicole Capeller to the position of speech language pathologist assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1st, 2015, in the tenure area of speech remedial at a salary of step 14 MA plus 17, $84,948, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2015-16.
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Jamie Bjorkman to the position of special education teacher assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1st, 2015, in the tenure area of general special education, at a salary of step 7 MA plus 15, $71,040, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2015-16.
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Marissa Foti to the position of English as a second language teacher assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1st, 2015, in the tenure area of English as a second language, at a salary of step 1 MA plus 6, $58,383, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2015-16.
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of David Airstock as district health and wellness coordinator for the 2015-16 school year, at a stipend of $4,641, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2015-16.
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Megan Kraft as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary grade four teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1st, 2015, through June 24th, 2016, at the pleasure of the board, at the salary of step 1 MA, $57,903, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2015-16. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Shannon Denise, elementary grade four teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Deere.
So.
By Lisa, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon, to approve the 2014-15 superintendent's annual performance evaluation?
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Set.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the selection of text or use in English 11, it is not nine as is indicated in the agenda.
So moved.